Our grace heavenly father, we're so thankful and humble to come before thee this day. We're so thankful for the privilege we have of being town councillors and the mayor and we're thankful for the opportunity we have to serve in our beautiful town of Cardston. We'd ask a special blessing on us that we may be able to make wise choices and that we may be able to be guided to be responsible with the taxpayers' money and in all we do. Bless those that are struggling and bless those that are driving on the roads that they will be safe. We're thankful for all we have and we know that all we have comes from thee. These blessings we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
All right, so today is the eighth of October and councillor Brown, it's pretty well coming to the end of your mandate as deputy mayor. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Good job.
And next will be councillor Court. There we go.
Oh hail.
So we recognize our media, Corey Mackelley for Channel 32, thank you. And we have in the gallery, we have Sergeant, Sergeant Hodge, that's your gallery. You're doing great.
Take the gallery.
So we are calling the meeting to order and we first of all need to adopt the agenda. So I hope you saw your agenda there.
I did, yeah.
Some items in closed session that will be discussed regarding land sale and employment contract proposal. So those will go in closed session.
I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. All right, so we have our delegation. We have Sergeant Hodge, so if you'd like to come and kind of, we didn't have the numbers, so maybe you can help us.
So there was a bit of a clerical error that I identified there and I didn't want to give the false information out. So we had to figure out why we were having that. I think we have it figured out, but going forward, we'll have a different reporting format for statistics and stuff like that. So unfortunately, I just don't have it today.
Thank you.
So what I do have is a quick rundown of some of the numbers, just really generic things. So one thing we noticed in quarter three here of the year was drug enforcement was up. We had quite a few files where we were making seizures for possession of drugs and drug trafficking, typically focusing more on hard drugs, things like methamphetamines and cocaine. So that's something we're putting a lot of focus on right now, is trying to curb that before it becomes a problem in the community. So impaired driving continues to also remain a big focus for us. We have a lot of impaired driving charges we've laid this quarter. Also, along with that, a lot of suspended drivers, so people that were, had their licenses removed for different reasons, they continue to drive. We're dealing with a lot of that, which falls underneath criminal code traffic. When we look at traffic, collisions are actually down, so that's a good thing. I suspect now with this new quarter and this new weather we're getting, we're going to see some increases in reported collisions. So one thing that was part of our detachment plan that we discussed with council in the spring was to reduce property crime. So when we look at third quarter this year compared to last year, we're down 30%. So that's a, that's a pretty significant number. When we look at the whole year comparison, we're down 15%. So we had a really good third quarter and it averages out to 15% reduction over. So 10% was our goal. So right now, we're doing quite good on that. So when we look at total criminal code charges and investigations for the detachment, the, for the whole year, we're down actually 12% from last year. So that's a good thing to see, that crime is taking a bit of a downward curve at this point. So staffing levels in our detachment, we, for the last three months, have been running too short, so we had to try to mitigate where our resources were being used best. And as we go into this new quarter, we're going to get two new members coming right from Regina. So they'll slowly get onto the streets once they're trained up and that'll bring our levels back up to normal. So.
All right. So thank you very much. And you could maybe talk about the fact that you had an open house, helping members of this community learn how to protect their homes against crime of opportunity. I was there, it was a very good presentation. I only regretted that we were conflicting with political forum and with other activities in the communities. And I hope that your detachment would kind of think of doing that type of presentation again. I found it extremely informative. I even learned something and had seen some of those presentations before, but you always seem to learn a little bit more once you're a little bit more aware. So thank you for doing that. And I really think those are important things. And I even think regarding that type of information, if you could even release that to the local newspaper as to how to secure your home, I think that would be a really good write-up.
Yeah. So that, that evening, when media was here, we had that same discussion. So I'm hoping we may see something this week in the newspaper, if not, maybe next week. And the town halls are a really big priority for the RCMP in Alberta right now. So as part of our crime reduction, we want to continue having those meetings to discuss things like crime reduction strategies, whether it's securing your home or your property. We, you know, we're open to any other topics that maybe the, the community would want, that we can have a discussion on. And then as that night went, we kind of opened it up to other concerns in the community that, that surround policing. So I think it's good to hear from the community what their concerns are and we can, we can have those open discussions.
I mean, there was one part where you talked about traffic around your home or around neighbors' home. When you start to see increased traffic, it's most likely linked to drug being distributed openly in that home.
Yeah, watching for those suspicious.
And so I think all those are extremely good information. Councillor Bangle?
Sergeant Hodge, I got two questions for you.
Sure.
What do you account the property offenses down 30%? How did you accomplish that?
We can't say it's one certain thing. We know that we have what we would label as habitual offender, somebody who commits a lot of crimes, currently incarcerated. That helps out a lot. We've done some proactive things like putting pamphlets on vehicles to lock, secure valuables, things like that. So I think it's, all of those things come together to, to help decrease. So.
Second question, how is your community programs working? Like your neighbourhood watch, your COP program and your rural crime watch programs, are they functioning well? Or could they be better?
COP could be a bit more active. It goes in spurts where we get really active for a while and then it tends to just taper off. Interest tapers off. So we could be more active there. Rural Crime Watch is still in its infancy, starting in the county. That's something that we're addressing with Cardston County right now, to get that up and running at, at full strength.
And neighbourhood watch, have we got a neighbourhood watch program?
No, it's pretty much non-existent now. So, yeah.
Should we have a neighbourhood program?
If somebody wants to take it on, I'd be willing to have that conversation, yeah, to see, see what interest we can get. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Brown?
Sergeant Hodge, I was just going to mention, my, my daughter lives in Edmonton and they live four or five blocks west of the Edmonton Mall. And they've been experiencing a little bit of, of problems in the surrounding neighbourhood. And so they kind of, as a neighbourhood, just kind of talked together. Said, if we have any suspicious vehicles, let's phone around everybody and see, first of all, do we know who these people are? Are they friends or family or whatever of anybody? If not, then we just keep our eye on them. And if they're, if they show up and they stick around and they're just kind of casing the neighbourhood, then they phone the city police. And while I was up there a couple of weeks ago, there was a, a couple of guys that, that showed up in the neighbourhood that really didn't belong there. And it was, it was amazing to see how the phone just started ringing. My daughter's kind of, is kind of taken under her wings. And, and all the neighbours started calling, no, we don't know who they are. No, we don't know who they are, you know? Okay. So it was really interesting. And sometimes that's what you have to do. But the key, as I said to my daughter, is don't approach those people yourselves. Call the police, get them involved because that's their duty. You don't want to, you know, get hurt if they have some, you know, bad intentions, right?
And that's why part, being part of a citizens on patrol or neighbourhood watch or rural crime watch, that's the big thing I see as a benefit is, especially with social media nowadays, you can get the word out very quickly, these are the, you know, vehicles we're looking for, this kind of activity is happening in a certain neighbourhood. And it spreads the word so that then the public can start feeding intelligence into the police and we can respond accordingly. So, yeah.
Well, that way, they're not saying, well, the police are never around. That we have to kind of, I mean, you have to look at it, our neighbourhood, we, we got, what, six police officers detached to the town or seven, when it's a full contingent?
Yeah.
How do they look after a community of 3,900 people? They can't be everywhere. But the people in the neighbourhoods are there. And they can pass the information around. And I think it's a matter of education and maybe that's something that we could, you know, do through our website too, is mention that, that maybe be on the lookout for suspicious people and pass all the information, but don't approach them.
Well, it'd be a good thing for the next town hall. We do, probably after Christmas, we'll do a town hall again. And we could have citizens on patrol here help generate some more interest into their program. So.
Exactly.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do in our community.
Any other questions?
And I know that someone asked you a very pertinent question at that meeting, how safe is our community in comparison of other communities in southern Alberta of our side? And your answer was?
It's very safe. It's on the, when we look at crime severity index, where you have the lowest in the southern Alberta right now. So we're doing very well here. Yeah.
So thank you to your detachment. Thank you very much for all you do.
Great. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Don't slip on the snow.
Yeah. All right. So we do not have Mr Sheen at this point as a second delegation. So we will carry on until he comes and then we will deal with it. All right. So here on the number five, we have minutes of the regular council meeting of September the 10th. Councillor Selk?
I move adoption of the minutes of the September 10th council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? I review them and fund them to be according to our discussions. All in favour? Thank you. All right. Let's go on to number six, bylaw and policy. So we won't be able to do all of them because two are contingent to the public hearing at 6 o'clock. So we're going to do all what we can and come back to those later. So the septic bylaw 1687, you can see the intent of that bylaw in the background that has been provided for you, is essentially to create what's becoming a practice of allowing disposal of sewage in our facility through, near Redford Park, there's a manhole there, to be able to gate, to be able to gate that, that area and make it properly accessible. And if you look at the bylaws, there is a fee that would be charged to those who want to access that in order to be able to do so. Councillor Selk?
I move second reading of bylaw 1687, septic disposal facility bylaw.
Okay. Other questions? Councillor Bangle, go ahead.
Jeff, in this RFP, you've indicated that there's some potential costs incurred. What my concern is that, is we say, at this point in time, there's minor costs. And then all of a sudden, we're looking at a $45,000 cost to install a, a proper, you know, drain system and, and gates and, and lock systems and anything else. Can you give us some kind of an idea of what it will, what will cost us to, to do this properly?
So right now, we're just looking at some fencing and a lock. That's about it. There's not much more to it. So it is truly minor. I couldn't tell you, councillor, what a ultimate perfect design for a dump station like that looks like. I just don't know.
And we're charging how much?
$10 a cubic metre.
Which is a very sizable.
I was going to mention, I think councillor Selk, you asked at the last meeting, is there margin in that? Is that covering our cost? I asked Bart to do an analysis of that. There's significant margin in that rate.
Is there?
Yeah.
How do you measure it? I mean, you just dump it and call it good or what?
By the cost of cubic metres.
They, they gauge it by their truck. So the driver is gauging the, the volume based on the capacity of their truck.
Jeff, my son lives in a rural area with a septic system and it costs him just about $1,100 to have his septic once a year.
Cleaned.
You know, and so if we're charging $10, you know, for dumping fees.
A cubic metre.
Yeah, again, per cubic metre. So, you know, a large honey wagon's going to be carrying a number of cubic metres.
So this isn't just like for campers?
No, no, this, this is commercial haulers.
Commercial hauling.
Yes. We have a dump station at the campground for RVs. That's fine.
Yeah.
This is just commercial hauling.
Some guys that are bringing it in from like Glenwood and out that area.
Correct.
And Frank Beavens or?
I mean, all those who have those portable honey wagons. Exactly what it is. All right. All right. So are there any other questions? We have a second, we have a motion for a second reading. All in favour? Thank you. So seeing that there are no other questions, we could go for third.
I'll make motion to have third reading of bylaw. Let me see, 1687, the sewage disposal facility.
Septage bylaw. Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. It's passed. All right. So the 2019 planning session resolution, thank you, Jeff, for having put all our hard work at AUMA into readable and concise kind of one pager kind of group of resolutions. And I thought it was interesting the way you regrouped them. Are there any comment regarding this? Or do you feel something was missed?
Please actually don't pass 3B. I would ask, that was just in jest.
Jeff, you may want some.
Oh, hey, okay.
All right. So can you, can you give me a sense, do you feel the emphasis that is given to us in those five different groups of resolution is appropriate for us to move along? There's quite a bit of work there. Honestly, it looks like one pager, but this is months.
It's going to take a lot of work.
Months of work. A month and year of work. All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
I should wait till Jeff gets back, but I give him kudos on how he's put this information together so fast, since, since we went to AUMA. And he was working on it at nights.
He had to also hire two people for this town, which took a lot of many hours of interviews and working long hours.
Exactly.
So those resolution, Jeff, you received kudos from councillor Bangle for your speedy ability to present that to us for more planning session. And we, we only need to approve those resolutions.
Need to start going around the table and making resolutions.
And so that's what is going to take a little bit of time. So councillor, if you're really on the ball, we can move those fairly, fairly well before 6 o'clock.
Question before we do that, Jeff. Is it a reality of what we have on paper, is there a reality in, in financial that we can do these things?
Um, yes, in my opinion, because when you talk about the big ticket items, you're talking about, let's talk the rec facility, for example. The resolution is to get conceptual drawings. The resolution is to prepare information and data for public meetings. Engage the school division. So these aren't spending resolutions. These are investigation rate resolutions.
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm pretty comfortable with it, yeah.
And councillor, really, at the time of the budget, if there are some items that need a little bit hefty discussion, we will have those.
Well, my concern is, is the last two weeks with the provincial budgets not being tabled. And as we sat in AUMA, they're talking about all of the costs that are being pushed on to the municipalities in user fees. And they're going to have to recover in user fees, the police costs and so forth. I just want to make sure that our resolutions at this planning session is, is a reality that this council, with their limited amount of tax dollars, are able to do a five-year business plan or a three-year finance plan.
Yeah, I'm not worried.
Yeah. So we'll knock those things around when we do our, our budget, right?
That's right.
And so we'll fit those in where we can and?
Yeah. So next meeting, we're going to be bringing you first draft of the budget. And different from previous years is we're not bringing you a balanced budget. We're bringing you a heavily deficit budget in two weeks.
Yeah.
So a lot of these discussions are going to have to happen, for sure.
I mean, honestly, this is the way we start. We start with a, a budget that has, in general, more, more expense than the revenue. And then we'll cut the fat until we get that balance. Because as you know, municipalities have no other choices. And it's wise in its own way. Councillor Selk?
Can I make a recommendation that we grab a line item, make a resolution and ride that pony to the end so we can get this all moving?
I totally agree with you. This is why.
Park, you want to start?
With the current unsightly properties, I make a resolution that we direct administration increase enforcement of unsightly premises, particularly along Second Street East.
Yeah. All right. All in favour? Thank you very much. Councillor Brown, do you want to try it?
Yep. So I make a resolution, or sorry, I would like us to pass the resolution on Westwind School Division slash Lion.
Still one.
Oh, right. Okay. I make the resolution to direct administration to prepare a monthly report to council on the status of unsightly properties and files.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. Councillor Bangle, you want to give a shot?
As it pertains to Westwind School Division slash Lions Park, I make a resolution to direct administration to request a meeting with Westwind School Division to determine the direction of the Lions Park contract.
Okay. Any questions regarding that? No? All in favour? Thank you. All right. Councillor Selk, go for it.
I make a resolution to direct administration to investigate names of community indigenous elders who may be willing to serve as a cultural consultant for town council.
All right. That's going to be a very useful person to us all to move through that.
So when we move on this one, that's the one that's going to cost us some money, right?
It, there will be, there will be a certain amount of honorary, but it's not going to be an amount like this.
Okay.
Okay.
An elder may do it.
All in favour? Thank you. Is normally appropriate etiquette to recognise an elder? All right. So next?
I make a recommendation.
Make a motion.
Motion. Motion.
Are we?
We're in a regular council.
So you guys have been saying?
None of us have said that.
You've said you made a resolution or a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a resolution to add the remaining trade corridor study costs to the 2000 or 2020 budget, depending on the levels of funding from Community Futures.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. Councillor Brown?
I move to direct administration to get a conceptual drawing for a recreation facility structured similar to Duchess, Alberta.
Okay. And that is the item you refer into, councillor Bangle? You concern?
Along with either one.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So that's part of the budget discussion, okay? All in favour? Thank you very much.
I make a resolution to direct administration in cooperation with the rec facility committee to prepare information and data for an upcoming public meeting, the date to be determined later on, on the matter.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. Councillor Brown?
I make a resolution to direct administration to engage the Westwind School Division on upgrading the Ball Diamonds at the elementary school with the potential capital support from the town for the project.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much.
I move to make a direction to administration to put the southwest Ball Diamond dugouts in the 2020 budgets.
Right. All in favour? Thank you very much. Councillor Selk?
I make a motion to direct administration to proceed with costs and planning of pickleball courts adjacent to the south side of the swimming pool and to include costs in the 2020 budget.
Pickleball, it's, I mean, honestly, who would have known?
I know.
All in favour?
Councillor Selk should do the next one.
Okay. No.
The second to the B.
3B?
3B.
Okay. Councillor, councillor Drew?
Okay. I thought you were going to. So I, I'll make a resolution to direct administration to work with Les Ferber to investigate cost and logistics requirements to do the, the hole on the, or the, sorry, the 16th hole project with the town staff.
Relocation of the 16th hole. Okay. All in favour? Thank you. Councillor Brown?
I move to develop a poker literary society as the liquor licence C for the golf course.
No, no.
Or whatever other name we figure would work.
It's a joke. We're not doing that one.
Skip the next one, councillor.
We're skipping.
What colour is your red face, Jeff?
Yeah.
Receded.
Receded.
We're sending it already.
Am I moving on here? Okay, I make a. Did we vote on that? We don't vote on that one. We're not going to on that one. Do you want the next one or should I do the next one?
That was councillor Selk's answer, you may.
I would make a resolution to direct administration to investigate the processes by which the town can influence and proceed to expedite the repatriation of the seaport land to the blood tribe.
Man, it should be done.
Get it done.
Yeah. That has been way too long an issue. All in favour? Thank you. Need to resolve that one.
I make a motion to direct administration to prepare a business and financial case for the extension of the west area raw water irrigation.
Right. All in favour? Thank you very much. That, that could be an interesting project along that line because there's quite a few people who would like to hook up on that line. Anything else that you want to talk about, resolution that you think was missed? I think we covered them all. All right. So that's very good. Thank you so much, councillors. As you can see, administration is going to be busy. Solar project budget amendment. So we have a project that we had not included in the budget at that time, but we also knew that the project was conditional on having a grant. And we also knew that that project was conditional on having NMAX. I present as with a business case where the debt load was going to be incorporated within the whole of the financing model. So essentially to no taxpayers' cost. So what we need then to do is to approve the borrowing bylaw, which allows us to move, is to move money from.
So your borrowing bylaw is approved?
Yes. It's just to move the money.
You need to put this in budget so we're allowed to spend it?
Right. Yes, that's right.
It's essentially both the revenue and the expense. They're not considered in the current budget. And I don't think you'd like a $3.8 million variation without your approval.
That is right. I mean, but the revenue expenses balance out, so therefore it's not changing.
Correct.
It's not changing the tax structure.
So we did get that grant money then, didn't we?
Yes. We, last, the Friday before we went to AUMA, I signed the grant agreement on it. Yeah.
Okay, councillor Selk.
I move to approve the addition of capital expenditures totaling $3,832,119.61 to account 2-92-762 light capital. 2-92-762 Light Capital, to be funded by $1,140,000 from account 1-07-852 Grants
Which is a grant.
Other capital, and $2,692,119.61 from account 1-12-597 Loan Proceeds.
You done well, councillor. And sorry if I said the wrong words, but in my mind was clear, but I didn't pronounce, did not speak it the right way. Thanks for the correction. Okay, so that is now approved, and now it is going to be approved once we vote, and then it's going to be in the budget. All in favour? Thank you. Now it's going to be in the budget.
Correct. Just for council's information, they've started to mobilize equipment. And then they've had two snowfalls.
Yeah.
So they started mobilizing product and equipment right before the last big snowfall. So hopefully soon. The ground's not frozen, so we're okay.
All right. Councillors, the two next items, we cannot touch until we have the, the public hearing at 6 o'clock. So we're going to carry on and see how far we can go. Seven other business. I'm sorry?
I'll touch base with them. We can get them at the next meeting, too. I'll touch base with them after this.
It's, it's okay. But we can't proceed until we have the public hearing. It's advertised, and we need to stick to the time. Other business, 7A Ice Ring Capital Request. Murphy's Law Work Perfect. So Jeff, maybe you want to help us understand the misery that you're dealing with?
We have no hot water for the Zamboni, and no hot water for the showers or heating the dressing rooms. Now thankfully, the weather's mild, and so it's okay. It doesn't help with the cold showers, but it does help with the dressing room temperature. Both, when we started up this year, KB came down, and both of those tanks, the one in the Zamboni room actually blew out, and we almost flooded and lost the ice. So we just caught it right before. And then the exchanger in the other one has got holes in it. And so Randy's requesting some money to replace it. Now thankfully, we actually have some ice center reserves. So we have $42,000 in reserves. KB's quote for installed is $15,000. And so we are requesting, and I support the request to, for the transfer from reserves.
All right. So we need, Councillor Drew, you want to do that motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve additional expenditures of $15,000 from account 2-72-307 for Ice Center.
Okay.
And then, do you want the other
Yeah, please.
Capital to be funded by a transfer of $15,000 from account 4-10-269 Reserves, Park, Recreation and Culture.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so that's a full motion.
Yep.
Questions? All in favour? And you can see the wisdom of having reserve, don't you? So 7B Policing Funding. This is for a discussion. Jeff has started to allude as to the potential cost. But here you have it. Jeff, if you want to kind of walk us through that high-convoluted formula, I looked at it, and I thought, oh my goodness, there's many pieces to that. It's a long sheet that you have. If you have that, it's a spreadsheet. And the bottom portion of it is the town.
So what the formula, the proposed formula, I should say, this is not done, what the proposed formula consists of two portions. One, it is the percentage of our population against the percentage of all communities under 5,000. So we, for example, are 0.51% of that population. And so the second portion of the formula is our percentage of assessment against this total assessment of all communities under 5,000, to which we are 0.11%. So the population-based formula puts at 15%, 53,000 and change to the town, and the equalized assessment portion allocates almost 27,000 for a total of $80,372. And so that would be at the 15% range, and then you can see how it goes up from there, all the way up to $375,000. So, you know, that big number is terrifying, to be frank.
It's absolutely terrifying. The only thing that I think we need to remember, the budget is coming October 24th. I would imagine that would address this issue, possibly. Possibly, we're not so sure.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if they have it concluded before the budget, because they're just starting this consultation piece. It would make sense if they could by then.
Okay. So I really think then, maybe, is there a need for us to really state our case as to what would be possibly doable financially in a town like ours? Because there is such a spread between 80,000 and 374,000, that honestly, 374,000 represents
Well, they actually give you that number right next to the total share. That'd be a 15% municipal tax increase, right?
Exactly. And I'm thinking, honestly, who can live with this 15% reduction in MSI coming our way, which is at least minimum what we know it's coming, and then have to worry about the 15% increase in taxes to deal with policing costs? This is now a 30% whammy on our budget. But it's a spread, right?
Sort of, yeah. It's 15% of MSI, which is not the total budget. But yes, it's still significant. There's no question about it.
So it's a large spread. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't do something about it?
I wouldn't jump the gun too soon. The last two or three weeks, there's been a number of MLAs wandering around the rural parts of the province, claiming that they're all about safety and policing in the rural areas. We're a small town, so we would somewhat be caught up in that particular discussion. So I wouldn't worry about it too much right now, until the budget comes down, and we have a better idea of what's going on.
Councillor Selk?
I think in conversations with Barry Morashida in various settings, he said that AUMA's position is that they want to stay with 15%.
So they are pushing toward that figure?
Yep.
Well, that's a good, that's a good thing. So we should support that position, but I'm wondering, do you
I suggest that we send a letter in support of that position, 15%, and say that this, this community is hey.
One thing I would mention, that there's an assumption in supporting 15% that any charge is inevitable. And we don't know that yet, for certain.
Yeah, that is a problem, right?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe, maybe a councillor called as a point, maybe we should take it as advisement, and kind of keep an eye on what's moving along, knowing that the AUMA would be betting for us. Although they are the one who strongly proposed policing costs for small community under 5,000.
So can I ask a stupid question? I guess, if we're paying more, or I guess we're paying our share, does that mean that we have some say in what happens? And does that mean that our, our CMP detachment gets some more staff?
Right. So it's a great question, and it's been asked by a whole bunch of people.
Okay.
And, and, no, because I sat on the webinar, and that was the common thread.
It's a very good question.
There's two parts to it. If you were to ask the part about, does that mean we get increased staff? The answer would have been, this is not a performance discussion, it's a funding discussion. Right? That'll be the answer. But to the second part, the short answer is yes. What they've suggested is if the municipalities under 5 now have to pay a portion, whatever that is for their policing, right now, the regulation doesn't allow you to have a formalized police commission. But they would change the regulation to allow communities of our size and others to have a formal police commission with oversight over your local detachment.
Right.
So, at AUMA, we, I learned that Tabor is the only rural private police force.
That has CMP, and it has a
Yeah. So would this affect them in this way? Because they already
They're paying all their costs of policing. Now, some of those city, and I can't speak to this well, some of those, and I'll bet Tabor's one of them, they pay all the costs of policing, but then they also get a grant to offset policing costs because they have a local police detachment. So I don't know what the net of that is. I really don't know. But I do know that there is funding for communities that have their own police services.
Okay. So the understanding is we keep an eye on what's coming down the pipe, and then we'll need to be vigilant as to handle that one, because that's a new one for us, and it's going to affect our budget. Summer Games. I am wondering, Councillor Brown, are you willing to speak to this item?
I would love to.
Go ahead.
So I've asked that this item be put on the agenda, because the town of Curstyn last hosted the Southern Alberta Games, was 2001. Since then, there's been discussion about hosting it again. There are a number of financial and logistical considerations that we need to think about. As you all saw in your backgrounder, we can't do the Summer Games for free. It, there is a cost that comes with it. But when we talked about it in the Parks and Rec Committee, they supported the idea. They thought it would be good for our community. They felt like it would be great for our athletes and our local businesses. They were for me bringing this forward. So they were in support of this. I guess my question would be to council, to whether or not, what your feedback is on this. Once you've seen the numbers, I mean, they're right there in front of you. It's not
Right.
It would be a great way to showcase our town and community.
Right. So essentially, we can try over the years of me being on council to see if we could bring that. And Park and Recs at the time was recommending not to, for various reasons. Essentially, it's not that they were not interested in having it. Their concern was the availability of volunteers when church activities for youth involve many volunteers that are the volunteers that normally are the interested one, and all of us aren't finding ourselves without that pool of human resources. So that was always the concern, because it always fell in the same week. Go ahead.
But I think it's reasonable to assume, and I cannot speak for either stake, but I think it's reasonable to assume that if, in fact, council said, we would really like to have a Summer Games, we're going to proceed with it, this is what we want to do for 2021, I would think it would be reasonable to then take that information to either of the stakes in our town, and try and get them behind it. And by getting them behind it, that would, we would give them our dates, and there would be a request that there not be anything within that timeframe. And because I am on the stake, in my stake, and we do get asked different things, and we do plan a year in advance, I think it's the perfect window in which to do this. Because then there wouldn't be the problem with the volunteers.
So that is an interesting point, councillor. And that is, would really put council more at ease in supporting this. I always thought that there was value in bringing people to town. There is definitely a potential for, for a negative balance at the end of the Games. In general, there is, I don't know of any town that has really ended up in a, in a black after the exercise. But this is what council needs to do. Are we doing it to be, to be a source of revenue, or are we doing it because it creates an opportunity for other communities and to discover our town? So it's a rationale that we need to decide upon. And the rest will have to work hard not to have a hole that is not absorbable in the budget. So. Councillor Selk, you are the actif. I want to know your perspective.
I think any opportunity you have to bring people to town is a good opportunity.
Any councillor called, what's your opinion? I know that we had other councils where we had this come to the table.
Councillor Brown kind of addressed my concern, is the lack of volunteers. Again, I think it's a good idea, but we don't seem to get young vol, well, I shouldn't say that, because there are a lot of young people that have been volunteering quite a bit lately. Like, again, my concern would be volunteers, but I do like the idea of a Summer Games here.
But I also think that if we intend to do that, it's important that we kind of partner with the high school to be able to prepare those youths to step up to the plate, possibly.
Just a comment, Mayor. With respect to the volunteers, with the evolving nature of youth programs within the church, FSY is going to start taking up time that the church is going to solely run without volunteers locally. So this may very well fall on one of those years where neither stake has anything on the agenda.
So we're looking at 2021, right?
Correct.
2020, there is a more nice quest in your stake, right?
Yep.
And
They did their, the other stake did it last year.
Right, so it's your years. And after that could be the opportunity of being a little bit
The window is there.
Right.
The other thing we need to consider, too, I mean, I don't like deficit, but I'm just, I'm concerned about the timing for CFY as well, because they're going to go ahead every year and have CFY, according to Jeremy Preet. So he's another fellow that has to be talked to, because he has to be planning right away for all that as well. And we don't want that happening the same week.
But that is his own personal business.
I realize that.
That is not a volunteer. They are paid to be a part of that. My daughter worked with them last summer. She was paid. So I really don't think that, and they, Jeremy would take into effect when Summer Games would be. The key is getting the when out there. The sooner we get that out there, the sooner people can plan around different things. For soccer, I mean, when you look at our soccer program of 400-plus kids, how many volunteers do we run our program with? Many. 54 coaches. We have, we have junior high and high school, young men and young women that are out coaching for us. We're training them, right?
Yeah.
So we're giving ourselves a timeframe. I feel like the window is there. I feel like
All right. So, Councillor Brown, Councillor Selk?
So as far as the deficit's concerned, if, you know, when the budget comes down, and we get hit with the MSI reduction, you know, we're, we're looking at cutting back on services, or we're having to tax to be able to, to provide the services at that point in time, right? So we have to really look carefully at the whole budgetary process here. And know, kind of have a real good idea what our deficit's going to be. Because I understand that that, that we're going to, that's, that's a taxation thinking. That's where it's coming from. Right? So we need to be sure of that. And I'm always concerned about that kind of a deficit. I do like the idea for the Summer Games. I have been involved over the years. So I really do like them. Don't get me wrong. I'm not being a naysayer.
Yeah.
I'm just saying I'm concerned about the money.
Yeah. It's, it's difficult sometimes to equate benefit to a town that is not visible right away.
Yeah.
And money loss is so difficult.
That's just a little bit of a counter to that. We're looking at probably around 10,000 people coming to town. They're spending their money here. That's certainly going to help our business sector pretty good, so.
In order to move this item along, can I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Please go ahead.
Have a quick straw vote on who supports it, then push this back to the Rec Committee to develop it further.
Councillor Court in favour?
Yeah.
No, Councillor Brown. Councillor Bangle, do you want to give us your take on that one?
I got, I got mixed feelings about this, because I was involved in the last Summer Games. And it takes a tremendous amount of volunteers. A tremendous amount. And you don't realize. And what time of the, of the summer does this take place? Now?
First week of July, I think.
First week in July. So you've got, you've got families that, from this community, that actually exodus the first week in July. They're gone for two weeks at a time, you know, taking their families on holidays. And it's, it's becoming a first of July thing, because you can never predict the weather in August. I, I'm sorry, but I can't support Summer Games.
Okay, it's
From what is, from this community.
It's, it's all right councillor. We all have the right to have an opinion. Councillor Selk?
I support it.
Councillor Drew?
Can I just ask one question?
Go ahead.
If we apply for this, are we guaranteed to get it? Or is it something that we have to compete with other communities, right?
Yes, we commute with other...
If I could just mention something on that. Historically, they are looking for communities to take it. There, there's not a contingent of communities clamoring to host.
That's right.
So Pincher Creek's been doing it a lot the last little while. But I'm quite sure if we told them early of our intentions, you'd be fairly okay.
Okay, yeah, I would support it.
What I'm wondering, one question I have. When we did the Summer Games in the past, didn't we partner with McGrath or another town in order to get fields or something? No, we did it all on our own?
We have sufficient infrastructure, I believe.
Okay, so the infrastructure was not a problem?
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay. And councillor Brown?
I support it with some reservations. I'm concerned about the, the date too. We need to really work hard to get commitments from people. We need to get on it right away and, because, yeah, it's tough. That's, that's a tough time. So I do have reservations, so I don't have total support. But I, kind of in principle, I do.
All right, so it seems to me that there is support. I would support the idea also. There is also the concern of the money because part of that deficit, as you could see, was beyond and above all the donations they received. So it's going to take an aggressive campaign to get people on board to try to, to kind of help us with this when they are already approached with many other projects. So that's something that need to know very early on and a system set up to receive donations.
Yeah, corporate sponsorships is a real important thing for these type of things. You know, Canadian Tire has money out there for their, for the youth play program that they've got. And I did talk with those people a couple of years ago and they explained to me that they've never had any requests for money from here yet. But we need to get out there because they do have money. They want to, they want to donate money for these kind of programs. So I don't know where that, that was a couple of years ago.
Councillor Brown, I suppose that's what your group would do?
Well, that and, I mean, I've done sponsoring in Curstyn Soccer for the last 20 years.
Yeah.
I helped get money for the Million Dollar Soccer Field. There's money out there. I'm aware it's out there.
Yeah.
There are people that are set up with Geoff and his employees and with the Rec Board that we're more than happy. If we are all into this, we just need the go-ahead. And then we will, we will, with Geoff, figure out what's best and the order in which to do all this. If we're going to do this, we're going to do it properly. We're going to do it with the taxpayers in mind. We're going to do it with the businesses in mind, with the seniors, with our First Nations in mind. We have to look at all of these things. But I feel like we have a window and we have the people in the right positions in which to make this a fantastic event.
Just with what I'm hearing, I would just sort out, I'd recommend some resolution along the lines of proceeding with preparations for hosting 2021 Summer Games, including an application and a preliminary establishment of a steering committee and then a report back to council. Something along those lines.
Yes, that's exactly what I think should be done.
That?
Can I read it? Do you want me to read it?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Because there's no way I can, there's no way I can give that verbatim.
You just said what he said.
Okay, so I make a motion to proceed with the preparations of the 2021, including application and preliminary establishment of steering committee and back...
Oh, I was probably trying to report back to council.
And back to council, yeah.
Yeah.
This is my shorthand.
Yeah, I think that's what's needed. We need a little bit more information as time comes in. All in favor? Against? All right. Motion's passed. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So Geoff, am I to go back to my Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Committee, explain to them that the town is in support of this in theory and...
Yeah, I'll send an email obviously to Randy too. Well, it'll be on our wonder list of resolutions, so he'll have it administratively.
Okay.
And then, yes, you'd carry it from council and say council wants to see this happen and here's what we need to get in order.
Okay.
I mean, there's a chance we may find that Southern Alberta Summer Games says, you know what, you're 2022.
Yeah.
I don't know.
No.
We just don't know some of that yet.
Yep, exactly.
So we need to look.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I'll do it administratively and you'll carry it.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to 7D Code of Conduct Compliance Quarterly Report. As you can see, we just need to approve it.
I move to approve the quarterly compliance report to town council.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Now, the, on the 7E Town Lot Use Agreement. If you remember, that lot is the one that had brought a lot of contention regarding its behind the BNB landscaping kind of business. And the neighbors wanted to be able to keep the lot that is owned by the town and be able to have it accessible to the neighbor and looked after by the neighbor. And so that's what the agreement is written for. Councillor Selk, you wanted to see a, a small change in that draft. Can you maybe?
Sure.
Talk to it? Thank you.
I had a conversation with the mayor and Geoff prior to. And item number seven, it says that there shall be no permanent structure constructed on the property. All items and structures must be readily moved off the property at the end of the term of the agreement or upon notice of termination. My only comment was that we should either, A, put a provision in there that no structure will be put on there without the approval of the town, or that we put in that particular item that any structure that's put on there can be asked to be removed by notice of the town. One or the other. But we just want to make sure that there is no unsightly structures being put on that piece of property.
Can you put and/or as to the second?
I can do whatever you want, mayor.
No, please, no, please don't do that to me.
After councillor Selk brought that to my attention, I would probably be in favor of just saying there are no structures unless approved by the town because my preference is to not have a bunch of structures.
Yeah, that's my preference.
All those people have backyards. This is simply access to it. So I don't want to see us start accumulating stuff there.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So I'm okay with that if that's kind of the feeling. The council will amend that and...
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Is that I would prefer nothing be in there.
All right, so do you need a recommendation from council?
I think we'll just take the feedback and...
Okay, all right. Thank you. I have been asked to reset for about five minutes prior to the hearing. So if council is okay with that, somebody put a motion for it. Councillor Drew?
Make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Nolan, for being here. We need to recess for a few minutes.